Recorder.
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Present.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator Jane Stencham.
Here.
We do have a quorum and are able to conduct the business of the city of Newport. Item three is approval of the minutes of previous meetings from regular session May 10, 2022. It has been included in your package. If you've had a chance to read over those minutes, are there any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
I'll say.
We have a motion on the board then to approve the minutes of regular session May 10, 2022. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Any nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item four is proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor.
Mayor, if you'll defer to me just a second. And this is about these guys, and we're going to congratulate them and do it on them the way we should, but I do want to say that a lot of this would not be possible without Coach Daniel Dudley and his wife Ashley. Ashley's practically family. She's Reverend Watts' granddaughter and Chief Reagan's niece. Is that right?
That's right, right.
Yeah. And he, I mean, they've got two biological children, and I can't tell you how many adopted kids with dealing with the sports programs at Cock County High School. So, you know, Roman and Jody are first year, only Landon was a coming returning veteran for the four-by-one team and track team in general. These guys were first-year runners, even though they were seniors. And I don't know if Coach Dudley hadn't recruited them out, if they would have even come out. So, a lot of this goes to him, and I know he'll be the first to say it's a team effort. We all pitch in, but he really does go above and beyond what normally you would see out of an educator. So, but if you want to come up and...
Okay. Team, you come up.
And the coach.
And the coach.
And the coach. You're part of it.
Cock County High School Track Boys Four-by-100-Meter Relay Team. Whereas, the 2022 Cock County High School Track and Field Season saw many individual and team accomplishments. And whereas, several student athletes of the Cock County High School Track Team achieved personal records and rewrote modern school records. And whereas, the Boys Four-by-100-Meter Relay Team broke the modern school record for this event and qualified for the State of Tennessee Double-A Championship Track Meet, the first relay team to do so in Cock County High School Track and Field history. And whereas, through hard work, discipline, and talent, the Four-by-100-Meter Relay Team finished as one of the top-three fastest relay teams in the state of Tennessee, the best finish for Cock County in the state of Tennessee Track and Field Championships in over 30 years. And whereas, Landon Lane, Jody Swan, Roman Stewart, and Tayshaun Simpson are now recognized as Tennessee All-State Track and Field Athletes representing Cock County High School. Whereas, today is also Tayshaun's birthday. Now, therefore, in order to pay tribute to Landon Lane, Jody Swan, Roman Stewart, and Tayshaun Simpson, the Cock County High School Boys Four-by-100-Meter Relay Team, I, Roland Dykes III, Mayor of the City of Newport, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2022, as Cock County High School Track and Field Boys Four-by-100-Meter Relay Team Day, and commend all citizens to recognize and support them on this great day. In witness hereof, I have here to set my hand and fix the seal of the City of Newport, Tennessee, the 14th day of June 2022. Congratulations, gentlemen.
I'm a good football player for the Trail, thank you.
Yeah. One or two.
Want to get a, want to get a, I want to get a photo of, get a photo of another pipe.
Get a photo of who you want.
I have a crush.
I have a crush.
I've got about 30 seconds here, and I'm going to take it to all the aldermen and me, and myself included. I want to congratulate all of our department heads. You know, every time that we've asked something out of them, I mean, I'm talking about all of them, but all of us feel the same way. It really appreciates the job y'all do. You can tell the difference in the town. I hear a lot of good comments about what's going on with every department. Every time I've called them, they've been there, and then just a little bit. And I appreciate you all, the whole bunch, and they do too. So, I just wanted to tell you that.
You didn't take all your full 30 seconds. That's kind of unique. Our next item is communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have on my list, I don't know if any of y'all have noticed, but recently the county paved the annex parking lot. And there was some concern that they had paved over onto the city's property which we own, that adjoins the parking lot there, what we call the old Phil Owens property, which is also the designated trailhead for our Riverwalk. And so, we had a survey done, and the parking lot itself did not get extended out onto our property, but they did pour about a 30, 35-foot pad out onto our property and put three dumpsters on it. And I just need some guidance from you all on what your thoughts on that is. Do you all want to just kind of ignore that and let it stand? Do you want that addressed? I just need a little guidance, and not now, but something, I just want y'all to think about it and get in contact with me in the next few days or a week or so, and let me know what your thoughts on it are.
Well, they got the dumpster on the lot, it still don't change the law. I mean, you still, city still owns the law.
Correct.
So, I mean, it didn't change anything, you know?
Well, I mean, it didn't, it doesn't change anything other than that they, you know, they're using part of our lot. And I mean, if y'all are good with that, that's fine.
Did anyone ask permission to do this?
No. No, it was just done.
I guess they were asking forgiveness.
Yeah.
Sounds a bit easier.
I see a lot of that, but anyway.
Well, actually, I may worth more than...
Well, possibly.
If they don't reap their prizes.
Yeah, we may, but we don't pay taxes anyway. But anyway, it was brought to my attention, and I'm just passing it along to you all for you to think about, and I have no real position on it. If y'all want to let it sit as it is, that's fine, and if y'all want me to look into alternatives, I'm good with that too. So, y'all can just think about it and then let me know what your thoughts on it are.
We can always change it, Senator. We don't have to change it tonight.
No, I wouldn't want you to change anything. I just want to make you aware of it. Now, one thing you can keep in mind is that if you allow, by state law, if you allow somebody to take control of your property for an extended period of time, they can lay claim to it.
Seven years.
So, you might keep that in mind.
Seven years.
I know I've had friends that allowed people to put a fence on their side of the property line and lost the property because they allowed that fence to stay there for so long. And then, and once the statute of limitations had passed, it was no longer their property. So, you need, just keep that in mind, that if you allow somebody use of something, to lay claim to something for so long, it can legally become theirs.
We could address that legally, though, to prevent that from happening.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
By notifying the county that this is our property, and we're going to let you use it.
Right.
Which would prohibit them from ever claiming it, so...
That was the only concern I had, that over a period of time, unaddressed, it could become, it could, you know, switch over to being theirs that's allowed for them to use.
The county is one that, or the slab, you know, kind of, the county.
The Riverwalk, will someday come through our town, is that...
We've got a grant right now to do it.
They figure out, they figure out that's where the trail goes into that area, yes.
Yeah, it's where the trail goes.
Yes.
Like Terry said, we can always have it changed.
Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we already have the easement from the county, do we not?
Yes, we were made go through the permanent easement for recreational use across the property. We had to do a bank stabilization to create a platform for us to get through that area. And it ties into the Everbath Sexton, which is the old Phil Owens property for the trailhead.
All right, thank you. We also had our first litter pickup of the season on May the 21st, and we picked up 69 large trash bags of garbage around town that Saturday. And finally, we'll be having, this Thursday at 7:00, we'll be having our second Rhythm on the River concert series of the season. So, we had really good weather last time. It came a little storm early in the day, but it cooled it down, and it was, it was about the right temperature. Now, this week's going to be a little hot, I'm afraid, and they're calling for rain late, so maybe it'll hold off for us, but it's probably going to be hot out there. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A is consideration of reappointment to the Planning Commission Cecil Gillan's What is the board's pleasure?
And he has indicated that he would like to stay on the board.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, and he continue.
All right.
Okay.
Second. We have a motion then on the board. It's been properly seconded for consideration of reappointment to the Planning Commission, Mr. Cecil Gillan, to reappoint him during this term. It has been properly seconded. As I said, please indicate your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, Mr. Gillan's reappointed. Reports for committees and members of council and other officers.
The mayor asked me to brief you guys and lady on the Tanner project. We've had the hotel motel taxes been compounding for a couple months now, and so we've got the cash sitting there from that to make the improvements on the building. This is going to replace the doors and the windows that weren't replaced in the original project and helps us get the welcome center open. Dr. West is ready to bring the museum pieces in for the history room, so this will, it'll all kind of happen all at the same time, and then once that construction is done and we get everything set up, we'll be open for business. Is there something else you want me to add, Mayor?
No, that's, it's fine. Dr. West's visit is coming up on the 21st, I believe.
I think that's right.
He and his students will be there to install those placards, and so we expect it to be really nice once he completes the project. And of course, the visitor's center will be in front of the museum, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions about the project, the ongoing project? Okay. We go on to old business, unfinished business. It's item A is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-08, budget amendment, City of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2022-08, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2021-2022.
Thank you. Heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-08, as written.
Second.
We have a motion on the board then to approve ordinance number 2022-08, budget amendment for the City of Newport. We will need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2022-09, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2022-09, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2021-2022 for Newport Grammar School.
What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Profit, to, for ordinance number 2022-09, budget amendment, Newport Grammar School, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2022-10, budget for the City of Newport, fiscal year 2022-23. And you've heard the revisions that I've made earlier to that, to that, to that ordinance. Are there any questions?
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2022-10, an ordinance of the City of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the City of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023.
Okay, heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022-10, budget for the City of Newport, fiscal year 2022-23, has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, is consideration of the second reading of resolution number 2021-14, charter change for the City of Newport.
Mayor, that is the charter change that you all voted on early in the year, in January, I think, that amends the civil service charter for the fire department. And those were changes that were requested by the fire department and the fire civil service board that was subsequently sent to Nashville and reviewed and passed by the legislature and has returned to us for a second vote. And upon this second vote by supermajority, which means at least four has to vote for it, it will go into effect.
Okay. You've heard the reading. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the second reading of resolution number 21, 2021-14, for charter change for the City of Newport. It has been properly seconded. We don't need a roll call on that one, do we? Okay, Tina, we need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Under new business, have consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-11, amending the zoning map of the City of Newport for 834 Martini Street.
This comes from Planning Commission. We had a request for rezoning. This is, this is CNC Pond Shop. Basically, they have a, it's Firehouse Subs. I mean, it's public record now. They want to move the property line of the shop back toward Mr. Clevenger's home 30 feet. It keeps a lot of, doesn't make a lot of substandard or illegal size. It just moves that line back so they can have a little bit more room for their dumpster and parking. Planning Commission was, the two members here can tell you, they're very careful about a deep discussion, that they wanted to do everything they could to protect Martini Street, and they passed it with favorable recommendation to the city council, given that it was just moving 30 feet and that we discussed privacy fence as part of the final, final plat approval, or final site plan approval, excuse me, through Planning Commission. Anybody have any questions?
Everybody knows what's going on there? Purchase of that property?
They've got, Firehouse has an option to purchase the property that CNC Pond Shop sits on now. They need a little bit more room for parking and the dumpster, and to, the drive goes around the back of the restaurant, their traffic flow pattern. So, they're, the part of the agreement is contingent on that 30 feet being zoned commercial because technically, since it's residential now...
Does that 30 feet affect anyone other than Forrest's property?
No, ma'am.
His home? No, it doesn't affect any neighbors or anything?
We talked about that, and I mean, the main thing is not bringing the road on out and bringing traffic out onto Martini.
Right.
Because we wouldn't want...
Yeah, that would be not good for the neighborhood.
We didn't see anything wrong with it in that meeting.
Yeah, there's no right of way between the residential and the commercial property. All commercial business would be served on and off Cosby Highway, all residential business on and off Martini Street.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second it.
All right.
And Mayor, let me read that ordinance into the record. That's fine, no problem. Ordinance 2022-11, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Newport from R-1 low-density residential to C-3 interstate highway business district located at 834 Martini Street.
You got your motion?
We have a motion on the board. Do we have a second? You have a second, okay. You've heard the reading of the ordinance, number 232-11, amending the zoning map of the City of Newport for 834 Martini Street. We do need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mayor, anyone that is here tonight that is, would be interested in speaking on it, they of course can have the time at the end of the meeting for public comments, but to let them know there will be a, another public hearing like we did tonight at the beginning of next month before the second reading.
Right.
Hey, you all just voted. I think that somebody should have been up to talk before you all just voted. I didn't know it's what they voted. But as far as this deal that's going on, it won't stop here. It won't stop here. We all seen this a year ago. When you sit there and nod your head accordingly, that's fine. That's fine. You act like you was on our side, you know? You're the alderman up there. But the city's all about money, you know? They speak about probably 60, 67 years. They'd like to die in our peace without cars coming up down the road. You know, I'd like for y'all to consider that. It won't stop here. This is just, you know, it's going to continue.
You will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak and register your complaints or your concerns. You have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting to register your concerns.
It's not passed yet. It has to be voted on twice. So, there's the end of the meeting, and there's a public hearing at the beginning of next month, so...
But then you just vote, right?
Yeah, but it's not passed twice before it comes along.
We did have a roll call, and it did pass, all right. Item B, consideration of resolution number 2022-08, annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Newport, Tennessee, Highway 73.
And, well, Gary...
No, you go ahead.
You know, we had to explain earlier to some folks that came in from Wood Acres. This is the old distribution center of ConAgra that is now owned by Phoenix Investments or whatever the exact terminology is of their name. But they have requested that, they want to be annexed. We did a study on it, Gary did, on the taxes, and I want to think it's like 32 or 4,000 or something that we would take in in property tax. There's very little expenditure on our part. We probably put up a few streetlights. We'll start having to mow along the road because we'll have to take the road in too to be able to go to the property. And so, but we can handle all the other with the garbage and police and fire and animal control and all that. There's no additional expenditures. But for the good of their business and their opinion, they have requested that that property be annexed, and of course, it has been in front of Planning Commission also. And it would be our opinion that if they feel it's in their best interests to be annexed, then certainly we would want to support that since it's not, it's not cost-averse to us to do that. If it was going to be something we were going to lose money on or something, it would be different, but we're, we're not going to do that. So, it would be our recommendation that we honor that request and annex that property. The thing that we had to do earlier was, there were several folks that came in from Wood Acres, and as is prone to do with anything you do, seems like anymore, especially with social media being a pox on society, in my opinion. The rumor mill got started that for somehow that we were annexing Wood Acres, and so we had this whole army of folks down here that were concerned we were annexing their neighborhood. And of course, by law, we cannot annex anyone that doesn't want to be annexed. So, we assured them they're in no danger of being annexed against their will. So, they left satisfied with that, and I'm glad that we were able to put their fears to rest, that we weren't up to something hinky trying to pull something and annex somebody that didn't want to be. We wouldn't do that, and we can't do that, so... But that's just to make it clear that that's the story of what we're doing and why we're doing it, and it is the distribution center and, of course, the road going to it. We have to annex to it to be able to annex it. No, just what's on that property. The spur, the spur that's on the property will be in, but now, but the railroad going to the property will not be, just the highway.
And I would like to tell you, thank you for always explaining this to us, too. Answered every time I've called, just answered questions. I tell you, I appreciate the job you do, too.
Well, thank you. We want, you know, we want people to be informed, and I, you know, I have people call me all the time, the public, employees. That's why we have an open-door policy. Anybody wants to come ask a question, we'll try our best to answer it. You know, we want people to be informed because, you know, most of the time if people understand what's going on, they get on board with things. And one of the worst things that happens is this misinformation rumor mill that gets out there and just explodes through social media and just, you know, my dad, who never had a clue of what social media or the internet would ever have been, always told me that people will believe a lie much faster than they'll believe the truth. lie much faster than they'll believe the truth. And that's absolutely true today. And it's true beyond a doubt on social media. And so, you know, one of the things we try to do is to stop misinformation because it is the enemy of everything. And so, I was glad to put their fears to rest and allow them to go on back home because that had got going strong and, and they were afraid that's, that's what was about to happen.
Okay. I think you've heard the reading. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then. It's been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C is consideration of resolution number 2022-09, annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Newport, Tennessee, Rankin Road.
And again, this is the Woodland Park.
Woodland Park.
And I like the way Gary put it. We're asking us to annex this. But that's, but technically, that's what we have to do. It has, even though we on it, we still have to go through the exact same process as anybody else. So we have to request that we annex it.
All right. You've heard the reading. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded. Please do a roll call, Tina.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D is consideration of amending the city of Newport Police Department general orders.
I'm a little disappointed that Gary didn't come up and present this for me. As you all know, you are the only people can change our general orders, and on occasion, we have to come to you with these changes. This general order was recommended by MTS. This gives us the ability to do some things to protect some citizens that MTS says don't do without a policy. We went to our insurance provider, public entity partners. They were, they concur, don't do anything without a policy. I went and plagiarized some policies, put them all together. I think if you, you just stare at it still, it's different bar in it. But we did put a policy together. I got Mr. Hurst to review it. He reviewed that policy and approved it. And it'll, it'll just, as the letter says, it'll, it'll bring us into compliance with a part of the Tennessee law that we use to help those people who are less fortunate through their aldermental statutes.
Okay. For the presentation, what is the board's pleasure? We have stereo, stereo motions, okay? We have a motion on the board then to consideration of amending the city of Newport Police Department general orders. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye. Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you. I would let you know that we have already begun training to be compliant with this, even though we might not have not gotten it passed. The training is fantastic to help us do our jobs. So we do appreciate y'all passing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Item E is consideration of amendment to the annual state highway contract between the Tennessee Department of Transportation and the city of Newport.
Mayor, this is just a thing that comes up every year. It's, we've had it in place since 1994. And it's just a contract we have with the Tennessee Department of Transportation that reimburses us for fixing potholes and doing minor things along the state routes inside of town. And the good news is that it has increased by $7,300 over last year. So it is now up to just over $62,000 a year that they will reimburse us for work done along state routes.
You've heard the reading. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the annual state highway contract between the Tennessee Department of Transportation and the city of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item number 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A, consideration of bids for a salt spreader for the Newport Street Department.
Ben said he really likes to get up here and talk, so we'll give him a change, Ben.
We're trying to get prepared for next year, for this winter. But the salt spreader that we have now is, it's beyond repair. And we've replaced parts on it and welded on it and everything, so there's nothing left to weld to. So we couldn't find one on Sourcewell, so we had to bid this out. And we got one bid back, and it was from B&amp;H Sales. It was for $13,250. And we do have this budgeted in our budget. We do have the money in there. And I'm asking your approval that we purchase this.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the purchase of a salt spreader in the amount of $13,250 from B&amp;H Sales. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Good job, man.
Not finished yet.
Item B then is consideration of bids for air compressor for the Newport Street Department.
Yes. This air compressor, it was back in the eighties when it was purchased. And we can't find parts for it anymore. They don't, they don't make parts for it. It's obsolete. So we did research it on Sourcewell, and they do have one on Sourcewell that is comparable to the one that we have. And it is $21,451.72, and we do have that in our budget. And I'm asking for the approval that we purchase this, the street department.
I make a motion to approve this purchase.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the purchase of an air compressor from Brandy's in the amount of $21,451.42. It is on a Sourcewell contract and it is in the budget. Please signify your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Ben, I just want to say that I appreciate what you and, and your department do whenever you have equipment that is old or outdated and you continue to work on it and repair it and duct tape it together and get as much life as possible out of it. We appreciate that.
Appreciate the job you do.
We'll work through with it. It's ready for the job.
Absolutely. I have no doubt.
So.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Item C is consideration of bids for renovation for the Welcome Center at the Tanner Building.
I hit on it earlier a little bit. This is doors, windows, awnings, guttering, couple of things that the building needs. And we had a really good bid from the guys that did the first round of it. They know the building inside and out, so they probably were able to be more cost effective than the other bid.
Okay.
Prene. Is that the...
Prene, yeah.
Prene.
Prene construction. You got two bids?
Yes, sir.
And prene was the lowest, right?
Yes, sir.
And there's such a wide difference. You know, I've been asked why there's such a wide difference. I have no clue why. Like Gary said, possibly because the prene's familiar with the building. I don't know, but...
It's almost $120,000 difference.
Yeah, that's unreal how much difference there was.
Okay, you've heard the presentation then. We have Gary's presentation. The bid is for $44,700.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the bid of prene construction for $44,700. Has been properly seconded. Please indicate your approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Mayor, I'd like to also echo something Gary said during the very first, just to make it very clear. This is being paid for with the hotel motel tax money. We're not using any property tax money to do this renovation. This is strictly, we've already bought the, the equipment, the furniture and stuff that's going to be in the Welcome Center. And now the renovations, all this is being paid for out of the hotel, hotel motel tax money as related to tourism. So that is, we are not using any property tax money to do any of this work or buy any of this equipment.
I'm glad you cared. I imagine people had some questions about it.
Yeah, yes.
And the work that's being done in the museum by Dr. West and his students are also done free of charge. We paid nothing to have him do that. They do that, I think they've done it multiple times around the country. He's kind of an expert in his field. And we really appreciate what he's going to do for that, for the museum.
Okay, we have reached a point of comments for my citizens. Does anyone wish to be heard?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Administrator. Alderwoman, Aldermen, I appreciate it. My name is Aaron McMahon, Allon Daybreak Property Holdings, located right over here on East Broadway. I come to you tonight. You will be receiving a proposal within the next few days. In this proposal, we would ask for your consideration and review. This will be also followed with a contract here again within the next few days. This will be for purchase of the property located 150 East Main Street, currently owned by the city, parcel number 12 and 1201. This concept rendering before you is something that was then, one of our local artisans was employed to do this. This is again, just a concept rendering for the subject property. In this subject property, we're looking at a multi-use complex featuring retail spaces, apartments, restaurants, as well as bistro locations. As many of y'all know, to have a successful rebirth of a city requires to have a good anchor point. We feel that we have a great concept, and we feel this will be the anchor point that gets the city rejuvenated. We would also ask that, and you see our concept rendering, review our proposal, and we would ask for an answer to the contract that will be provided to you within the next few days. We would ask for an access to our contract for the next meeting.
Thank you. No action to be taken tonight. But is there anyone else which to be heard?
Hello, Alderman. I'm Jay Graham. Nice to see y'all. I have got a proposal together to also purchase this little bit of property. I'm planning on doing a few things to it. I'm going to remove some trees that need to be gone. I'm going to grade out what's there. I'm going to add a 25 by 50 foot building with a deck over it with a tin roof on. And I want to make a barbecue spot out of it. I really don't have much more than that. I just wish y'all could take that consideration when we do it. If there's a price on the table, maybe I need to know that. If you have one, or do you want me to give one?
Do we have a, has there been an asking price for property?
No, we don't. We not, we don't have the property on the market. The first person approached me was Mr. Graham that would, I know they talked, I think we've all talked to Gary. But would, would the city consider selling the old mill site? And of course, you know, everything's up for consideration. And I suggested to him that he come tonight and that he put a business plan together and come and give you all copies of it. And to share his, his proposal with y'all and give y'all some time to think about it. And then if you were interested in selling, that it could be put on the agenda for July. And then you'd have till July to get more information. Now, right after that, I spoke with Mr. Graham and also spoke with his son, Lucas. Then Aaron, Gary makes me aware of this, this proposal that Aaron has, which is this here. And so, as fate would have it, you know, within a matter of days, we had two separate proposals kind of put on the table for this property. And so we have no asking price for it because we didn't have it on the market. It wasn't, you know, our plan was, our long-term plan was to make that the trail terminus for our river walk. And in other words, that's where it would end for now, for the foreseeable future, going west. And it would be a loop that you would walk around and then start back in the direction you just came for from, going back east. And some other amenities and landscaping that could be there. As y'all are well aware, when the first round of financing we had to do that, to extend the river walk down, was stymied by two property owners on the river that at the time wanted us to buy their property as opposed to letting us just buy right of way across it. And in the negotiations to do that, they wanted an exorbitant amount of money for the property at the time. It's a tiny little strip of land, and they wanted a hundred, just one lot. There's two. And the smallest of the two wanted $167,000 just for that little, little sliver. And that didn't count the sale. And we didn't have the money to do it at that time. We couldn't, we couldn't have done it even if we wanted to. So we ended up losing the grant. The property's just been sitting there ever since. We have been using it as a, we've been trying to build it up a little bit. We put rock in there. The debris that came out of the downtown project a couple years ago when NU improved the water and sewer lines downtown, we put that, the old concrete and asphalt was put over there. We've been bringing, the cemetery's been allowing us to bring dirt in from up there that they've stockpiled. And we've been putting dirt over the top of all that asphalt and concrete, trying to smooth it back up. So we've just been trying to improve the property since we lost that grant. Now, since then, we are currently in the process of reevaluating the river walk, and we have another grant to build on the river walk. But we have the exact same problem that we had prior in that we have to, still have to negotiate with those two property owners that we couldn't negotiate with the first time. Now, I've heard it through, again, I'm going to go back to the rumor mill. I've heard it through the rumor mill that Mr. Nayland told that his property now was not for sale at any price. So, you know, there's a lot of obstacles in the way for us to build the river walk down to the mill site. You know, it could end up if we go by, and I just sat through a class last week on, it's been a day, on right of ways condemnation and eminent domain. And that's a process that can take 12 to 15 years. If you condemn property and it goes to court and it gets drug out, they said it's not unheard of for the last 12 to 15 years.
years. So is it in the best interest of the city to hold on to the mill site and see what becomes down the road of the river walk, which was the intended use of the property? Or is it a better use of the property to allow development, to start bringing stuff back into downtown more? You know, that's a decision you guys have to make. So what you all are going to have to decide is, do you want to sell the property? What do you want for it? And then ultimately, which way do you want to go with it? So that's, that is a decision you guys have to make. All of those are y'all's decisions. And so I, me personally, you know, until I sat through that class on eminent domain and condemnation, I was gunghole about condemning it and running that river walk down through there. Because I've been wanting to do that ever since the nine years I've been down here. And but in hearing the obstacles and how long it can take, I'm less inclined to think that's a good idea just to sit on that property for 15 or 20 years and hope the river walk happens someday. It's the old adage about a bird in the hand versus two in the bush. And my two cents worth would be that I think it would probably be a better use of the property to let it be developed. That would be my thoughts on it. I'm still committed to the river walk. We still have a long way to go with the river walk down to the park to float. That's a long way that way, going back east. I, you know, with the opposition that we have from the property owners going that way, I just don't see us being able to do it. Not in my time here, probably. And quite possibly not in y'all's time here, if you start talking about 15 years down the road. So I think it would, instead of a dream, I think that the more practical way to go would be to develop the property.
It seems to me that there's still quite a bit of due diligence we have to do.
Yes, sir.
No action that we can take tonight.
There's more questions to ask about this. So, because I hear, just like I say, hearing another side of it tonight's different, you know, and I get a lot more information.
So in, in light of that, I think we have some work to do to determine which way, which direction we want to go. And we will certainly respond to each of you, to your proposals at some point. I hate to put a timetable on it, but we will certainly do our due diligence and try to figure out what we want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Yeah.
If not, we will consider a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We are adjourned.